To the House of Representatives, the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with invisible liberty and justice for all.
We don't have no recording this year.
Okay, are you ready Beth?
Well, yes. No, it's not gonna work. No, I can't, I have to log in to 15 different things and I'm not doing it.
You have a ball peen ham. You have a ball peen ham. It'll work.
I already reset the password, now it's ready to do my Microsoft password. We're done.
Next month when our system will play that. Okay, welcome to the April 27th. Common Council meeting. Have you had a chance to look over the others from previous meetings of where it was? Motion approved or disapproved? You've been seconded in all favor say aye.
Aye.
Do you have any communications Beth? Need a motion to open a public hearing. So moved.
Second.
Been moved to say to Brian Fitzpatrick, then Brian give the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
McKenzie.
Yes. We went over this last time, so I don't know if you want me to go over again, but...
Do you have anything you want to add, or if you might have anything you want to add about this?
Not really, it's just, like I said, it's just that area that no one even knows, didn't realize was even a road, that's between these two properties. The car diners on both sides are wanting to vacate it, and they'll continue to maintain it as they have been for the last 50-plus years.
Andy, I forgot, we probably, this public hearing had been opened already from last meeting, did we ever, we might have didn't close it last time, did we? So we didn't need to open it again?
I think, I think six and one half dozen together, whether you consider reopen or whether you continue it, I don't remember what the...
So we, where are we at in this, what do we need to do next step?
Didn't read it once last time.
If you've solicited comments already, I think you read it once or twice last time.
So we need to go ahead and close the public hearing and then...
There are no comments, and close the public hearing and proceed to...
Are there any other comments about this?
No.
Let's make a motion, is one to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Amy read motion, Ruth seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ordinance 07-2025. And you're in the way for the next, if we're ready once or twice?
It's going to be two minutes.
I don't think we're ready at all.
I don't think either, and it does not say that in the...
So we can do it all. No objection.
Just want to introduction of ordinance number 7-2025. In ordinance of the common council of city of Rochester, Indiana, vacating portion of a road between Fox Park Edition and Wolf Point Edition. This time there's no objections, we'll have the second reading by title only. Okay, ordinance number 7-2025, in ordinance of the common council of city of Rochester, Indiana, vacating a portion of a road between Fox Park Edition and Wolf Point Edition. That's what the third and final reading by title only. Ordinance number 07-2025, in ordinance of the common council of city of Rochester, Indiana, vacating a portion of a road between Fox Park Edition and Wolf Points Edition. Entertained a motion for the adoption of ordinance number 7-2025. She's still taking notes.
Where'd she run off to? It's being recorded.
Oh, okay, alright. All's in favor, just saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed sometime?
Okay. So whoever's here for that may go away if he wants to go. Or you see her, she really enjoyed it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Andy, you want to lead the next thing?
Yeah, the, you have a petition for voluntary annexation along with a proposed ordinance. I spoke with the attorney general for this, and he is requesting that you go ahead and have a public hearing on the annexation petition. This is super voluntary annexation, which means 100% of the property owners in the proposed property have signed the petition. The, and there are two listed there, and would make that, if it's granted in the next month, if the ordinance passes next month, it would make that part of the city of Rochester. After hearing, I would ask that you have first reading of the ordinance and introduce it. And one of the things that will happen between now and next month is the completion of what's called the fiscal plan. It's a critical part of the annexation request. You have to say, well, what services will they get that they're not getting in order to cause an outlay of that kind of thing? It's a financial justification, if you will, of the annexation. So you should see before you're asked to to vote on passage of that next month, you should see a copy of the fiscal plan provided by the petition attorney. All you really need to do now is open a public hearing, and then once that is closed, have first reading of the...
I think they have an example of the resolution to be sent.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, next month is, you will have two of this, the adoption of the fiscal plan is already...
But again, is it that you still have that for me?
Okay, so that's an example of that is, resolution 11-2025, you also, he has to sign next month, that's the adoption of fiscal plan.
And we have that, or we do not?
And we do have 11-25, we don't have...
You have it in there, but I think the fiscal plan is not yet.
Okay.
It's just an example of the...
So we need to open a public hearing?
Yes.
And then we read the ordinance one time?
And then after you close the public hearings, you add one reading.
Okay. So need a motion to open a public hearing?
So moved.
I'll second.
Move and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, is there anyone represented here that must speak concerning this annexation? If not, close the public hearing, motion to do so?
So moved.
Mark seconded, Brian made the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now there's an ordinance in here somewhere.
Introduction of ordinance number 10-2025, we'll begin with first reading by title only. Ordinance number 10-2025, in ordinance of the city of Rochester, Indiana, annexing certain territory and declaring the sand to be a part of the city. Just want to do the first one, correct?
So on the agenda for next, will be the second, third reading? So according to my agenda, we've already taken care of new business item one.
You have to skip number one on the old business.
I know, I'm just saying, we just, we just did new business item one, now we're going, now we're going back to old business on the redistricting.
Sure.
Yeah.
You should have in front of you proposed ordinance 12-2025. Couple of times in prior meetings, I've referenced redistricting. This is a result of some work that I did with WTH, just by way of review. Redistricting is important for the five of you that represent districts, it doesn't really matter for the large seats. And working with Casey at WTH, she went to the individual voter blocks, the best way to understand the proposed change, in my view, everybody works differently, but if you look at the last two maps in attachment A, you can see the shaded areas in the districts are those that are proposed to change. So for example, District One has a shaded area to the right that is proposed to be in District One. If you, if you look at the very last map, it actually has, what looks like a ratio in each of those blocks that shows its current location and its proposed location. So those very same areas, those two blocks say 5/1, they would be leaving District Five and joining District One. Okay? Why do we need to make these changes? Because if we don't make the changes, the population in the districts over time become lopsided, and it is considered offensive to constitutional notions of equal representation for one person to represent a district whose population vastly outnumbers the other, because that means the smaller district actually has a more powerful vote, so to speak. So it's particularly difficult in a third-class city under 10,000 people, because it doesn't take a lot of shifting around or moving from one to the other, that those percentages, although the raw numbers are small, the percentages add up quickly. And so when we looked at this, we said, yes, we need to make a change. So that is the proposed change, we're only asking that you read through it, most of you only saw this today. I would ask that you had first reading of that. Feel free to shoot me any questions, I'll do my best to answer them. It really comes down to a math problem of how, how close can we get the total number of folks in each district? And this was the best way to do that.
Anybody have any questions?
Andy, for this, I noticed seeing some as added to. If I wanted to know which streets, the specific street or boundary related to the street, would reaching out to Casey, would that be the best bet?
That would probably be faster than having me look it up.
That's why I wondered, I mean, I can look at the GIS, but if Casey were to give me just kind of the boundaries from the street side, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I will, I will look, I've got, I've got more information that she sent me, let me, let me look at that, if you have that for me, how many ways you can look it up.
Because I could try to guess this.
Yeah, it may be in the package she sent me, but it just was more information than the proposed ordinance.
Okay. And then I have one other question.
Sure.
So with the annexation piece, I noticed that that was going into District Two. So is that something that...
It won't affect, it won't affect this, because I want you to think of this as, this is a static change we're making based on the 2020 census.
Okay.
So in the next census, it'll capture that, and we may have to redistrict again because...
Two separate situations, so this we're doing because of this, and then the other would be a later potential.
Otherwise, we'd be in a situation where every annexation immediately required redistricting.
Yes, I can imagine.
And that's not the way it works, we do get to wait at least for the next census before we start the process and evaluation.
But all, all the annexations are taking place, and will take place, the president do not bring in any population at all. So, if I live in any of those situations. Okay, so we need to do...
I have a question. Andy, if this is passed as proposed? Yes. When will changes happen? Next election? I mean, first? I think, I think as of July 1st, but I would need to check with the county clerk, the secretary of the election board, to see when that's considered to change. I think, I think it is as of July 1st. Well, the reason I'm asking, it looks like the block that I'm in is going to go from three to two. If that's the case, would I, am I still eligible to be on this council? That's a great question. And, and I doubt very much it would affect your current term. Okay. Because I think the rule of thumb is that's measured as elected.
I'll check on that.
Okay.
So, any other question?
Does this have to, once this is approved by the city, does it then have to be approved by the election board? Is that what I'm understanding you just said?
Don't believe it has to be approved by them, they're not going to notify.
And then that's for the process, I'm not saying, correct?
Okay, introduction of ordinance number 12-2025. We'll begin with the first reading by title only. Ordinance number 12-2025, in ordinance of the common council of city of Rochester, Indiana, providing for redistricting and compliance with Indiana code 36-4-6-4.
Alright, that on the agenda for the next reading then? Jumping up to new business one again, there's this resolution 11-02025, do we do anything with that tonight? We don't, so that's...
Yeah, because it was just an example of it, because it doesn't have, it's the next month.
Alright, we're good.
That doesn't have to be read like the ordinance, it just passed, it's a resolution.
Julie?
Did I hear my name?
Yep.
Oh, right, I put some information, hopefully got one to everyone. Board of Works members, I came, what, 10 days ago, and we started our fundraising campaign. We had raised $46,000 in the last 10 days. Forty of which was a gift from a local couple. That we had a really cool conversation about what would you, what would you do to your audiovisual equipment, like if you, what's your drink? Because they come often, they know we're making money, but it will take years to get, you know, the big things, our wish list. So we put together, we already knew a $7,000 one, they were like, do that, but what else? And if anyone here was at Bonfire, there was a huge LED screen behind the stage. Impossible drink, they're $56,000 if you order one. But we came together with Clifford Signs, who did our marquee, RTC, our shelves, and some donated labor and installation, and we got one for $30,000, and that couple wrote the check for it. So, and that, a lot of that has to do with how this, the theater means a lot to a lot of people. So I was very, last week was a super cool week, to be a part of it. Because I was like, that, you would never ask to even get something like that, not this early in, and it's such an incredible gift for sustainability, and we partnered with RTC to do the marquee already, that brings in $10,000 annually for us. We suspect this will probably bring in twice that, if not more, and get our mission out there. But we're still fundraising, because even if you have money for a big, beautiful new toy, you still have to pay your bills. And when someone gives you a gift that big for an item, you, you know, it's just like the street department having money and the park department not, we have to stick to it. County last week was very generous and pitched in $5,000 for the big, the big goal we have. I have a little bit down there for you. We'd love to see a $5,000 commitment from the city, we've got projects in mind. They've got a list, you'll see what's funded and what's not. I sent out a bit, or a financial statement on us about a, two months ago, we made, we finished last year in the black, which is kind of crazy, but we did it. Our first fundraiser, and this is the art, Jim and Angie did a painting, we want to get good quality prints. There's local collectors, it's an expense fund they're taking, we have local printers doing the work. We'd like to fund that, and we need, this sounds crazy, but two more motion activated spotlights, because we have them, which are called follow spots. But if there's anything on that list, we'd love to hear it. We want to get this, we're hoping to have everything funded by June. We set the goals, but we do this together, this is how we did the marquee, and we have to do it every year.
Do we have a line item for the theater on an annual basis?
Yes.
Get them...
Is that a half yes?
I can't remember what the dollar amount was.
I think it's five, but I might be a mind reader.
What'd you say?
I think it's five.
I think it was, it was about a 10, so it was not what I was originally thinking it was, it was less than we thought it was.
And I know that from the county side, they had, they had actually funded it from economic, economic development. I don't know the city, what is corresponding to that in the city, because that would not be, I know a lot of times you do it in the redevelopment commission, but they did it specifically out of economic development. I don't know what that corresponds to.
Do you want to talk about that, typically, the theater comes out of the council, down that partnership, projects come out of the RDC. So I would, I would stick, I would stick with the council on this, if we align item five. I would ask for motion for that.
I'll pitch it, just send me a letter stating we need to release funds.
Okay. So there's already money in the budget, is what you're saying?
Yes.
So then basically, you're making a motion to spend the money that's in the budget?
Are we sure, etc.? I'd rather know if it's there for sure, then it's maybe there.
Can I tell it?
I'd rather know if it's there for sure, than it's maybe there.
No, it is there, I just don't remember, I can go look it up, I just don't remember the number.
You know it's a least five, but it could be 10, so we could do five, say if you're comfortable with that.
We've written our budget, we've just not been dispersing it?
I said what?
We put that in our budget, but we've not been dispersing it?
We waited for them to ask for it.
Okay.
We had to have something in writing.
We made them come back.
Careful not to write any checks without invoice, so that serves as the invoice.
So the money was put in the budget, when we did the budget, because there were lots of conversations, and all this is, is basically them saying, hey, we'd like to spend that money.
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
She just gave him a letter?
Yeah, I'll do it.
And secondly...
Now wait a minute, Heidi, a second?
Yeah, I'll, I'll second.
All, all in favor say aye.
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 Well, thank you.
For the $5,000?
Yeah, and that's all, it's not all, but that's great. Thank you very much, and Jim and Angie did that totally donate it. The collaborations lately have just, they always surprise me, but they've been even more so inspiring. That's also on your desk, that's June 10. It's everything Andy, Amy and I have been working on for RDP stuff on the theater side, it's kind of a mingle, and coffee at Mellow Mud on Tuesday, June 10. And we'd love to have everyone there. And back to the theater, and I'll, I'll get a little bit more on RDP later on in the meeting. But I would like a city council member to, we're having a board consultation this summer, it's a one-on-one deal. Like, I'd love to have a city council member be on the list for Jason to call. What you would like to see, you know, he, it's a totally independent thing. The community foundation is paying for that, just kind of a stakeholders meeting. We've got Board of Works involved.
And Jason is.
He's a, a board consultation, he's going to develop a strategic plan for us, moving forward. But he'd like community input on it.
Anybody on the council want to volunteer for that?
It doesn't sound like a lot of time, and he'll come to you. Perfect.
One of us will be in touch with you.
Yeah, I'll get them, I got both there anyway. He's a great guy.
Or we'll do it together.
Exactly. Alright, thank you very much.
Alright, Heidi, I'm gonna let the traffic clear on 31 for you, so I want to jump over you for when I go back, is that okay? You got held up, blew up your web about a half hour on bad traffic, so. So if we go down to item four, right, instrumental products, well, they're a baked one, I assume, they're annual.
I don't believe they sent...
Anybody represented?
I don't think they did, because if you look at their CF1, you guys were worried last month because you didn't really know about the actuals, and if you look at their actuals, and they...
They're way above, aren't they?
It's pretty, this was taken out by, by, it was, it was a long time ago, 2017, so...
So we just need formality to approve this?
Yeah, I mean, it's basically yes, and that, and Brian just testified.
A motion when we approve it? What's your question?
Well, I thought that we decided, but maybe I'm wrong.
Well, that's our...
That was, that one was not hitting the mark.
Is that what we...
And then we had questions that we didn't, couldn't answer, but when I see one, it's crushing with their action, with their...
Then it doesn't matter, okay.
They actually filled the form out.
And they did what yours does too, okay, I just wanted to clarify, because I was trying to remember the details of what was said.
Yeah, exactly, they questioned it when I asked them to come.
So it's only if there is a...
Well, we'd like for them to be present, they should be present, but this one's...
I think we've never done this before, why now?
Yeah, oh, okay.
So it needs...
Because this is the last year of the year.
At this point, if you look at their numbers, it's like, okay, and they gave the property tax and all that, books.
I'm looking at the top industry. Are you, Heidi, for them? Do you want to be?
No.
So we, there again, if you look at the third page, there are three times over. Yeah, so we need a motion to approve that?
Wait, did they bring someone?
Nobody's here.
Anyone use? I certainly remind you.
So John moved, Amy seconded, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, Heidi. Give us the good news. And while you're passing those out, are we going to have a combined meeting at some point with like, like the county, the superintendents, I mean, everybody wondering, kind of going over the implications?
Yeah, probably a good idea.
I see Rick back there going, yeah, we need to.
Yeah.
I will say this while you're...
I don't know if Jason's done this talking, but he's been for you.
I will say this, as you hand this stuff out. I think Governor Braun, from what I was told last week in the mayor's roundtable, will be making a circuit around the state. And I mentioned to Matt Grellar, I said, would you recommend, when it comes to Rochester, come to Fulton County, that I bring in commissioners, bring in school superintendents, he says, if everybody can be civil.
Yes, you guys can.
So if that invitation is made, I will be in touch with you and your commissioners, as well as all the superintendents of the county, and we can sit down and have a roundtable discussion with the governor.
Please invite me.
You want to go?
Yes, that'd be great, just to hear his perspective.
Okay.
Okay, so IDM's well with Baker Tilly, we're coming to advise her for the city. This is just a high-level overview of Senate Enrolled Act One. It was known as SB One going through, but now it is approved and in place, and so just giving you a high-level overview of this. So slide two, details out for homestead properties, those are the 1% tax cap properties. There are three different changes, for the most part, that have taken place. The top line item, you can see is standard deduction, so you guys have always had a standard deduction, and it has changed the past couple of years. You can see between this year and 2031, that that goes away, that it dwindles over time. So next year, for 2026, it'll be 48,000, 40,000, 30, 20, 10, and it will go down to zero. And replace of that, you have the supplemental homestead deduction, which is a percentage of your gross assessed value. You take your net, or your gross AV minus your standard deduction, and then you take off this supplemental homestead deduction. So for this year, it's 37.5, and for, from 2026... And for, from 2026 to 2031, it incrementally increases a deduction up to 66.7%. So for all of you who claim your first homes here in the city of Rochester, are essentially going to get a $66.7 or percent deduction of your assessed value on the going forward. That's on the assessed value side. That's big. That will in total decrease the assessed values from what they are today, your net assessed values, which is what you're paying your taxes on. In addition to those two things, there's a new supplemental homestead credit. And when we say credit, that's on the dollar side of things. So you calculate your taxes and then you get down to a credit. And the credit is a revenue impact and it's either 10% of your net tax bill or max $300. So that will be like a dollars deducted from your tax bill. In the next slide, I show an example. So those, those three things are moving. For 65 and over, there is a new credit of $150 that goes into place next year. That again is a credit. So that's on the revenue side. And then a disabled homeowner, there's another new credit of $125. You'll see the notes there that for the 65 and over credit qualification, there are some thresholds for a single filer. The adjusted gross income cannot exceed 60,000. And for a joint filer, the adjusted gross income must not exceed 70,000. And that is based off of income eligibility based on two calendar years prior. So, long story short, on the homestead side of things, with your 1% properties, you're going to see your assessed values decrease. I'm going to verify all the screen views. For you as a homeowner, it's a great thing. For you as a city council member, it's not a great thing.
So it's going to decrease after this massive increase of the slash assessment?
Yes. So, and when you see AVs go down, your tax rate will naturally come up is what would happen. Slide three just shows you mathematically, if you get into the details, what that calculation looks like. So you can see that for a $240,000 home, the standard deduction going down, and you can see the supplemental homestead deduction going up. So you can see that it, over time, your net assessed value goes from 115,000 in 2026 to down to 80,000 by 2031. So that is a significant assessed value decrease. And then you take the credit off of that after you calculate your taxes. So the next big change on the assessed value side of things on slide four is for your 2% tax cap properties. So all of your apartments, your senior living facilities, your rentals, they now get a deduction in their assessed values, which is great news. So in 2026, you'll get a 6% deduction, and then it incrementally increases to 2031 to get to a 33.4% deduction. So all of these apartment owners are now going to get a lovely 33% deduction. Consider it a free abatement for like the end of time until the legislature changes it. So that is really where we're going to see the biggest impact, and we'll get into your assessed value makeup in just a minute. But that will have a significant impact on the city of Rochester's assessed value. So again, what happens, your assessed values drop for the city, your tax rates will go up to get you the same levy that you guys have to work with, with your budget. That levy can only grow by the maximum levy growth quotient, which we'll get to. But basically what will happen is people will be hitting circle rates faster because your tax rate's going up. Slide five gets into personal property assessment. So the, it's called a diminishment exception. So right now, businesses that only have 80,000 or less of equipment within their facilities, they do not pay personal property taxes. That number's going from 80 to 2 million in 2027. So any businesses who have 2 million or less of equipment in their facilities will no longer pay taxes, 2 million or less, will not pay any personal property taxes. And then the note there on the bottom of slide five is that it removes the 30% personal property floor. So essentially, when you have equipment of a high level or any level, it's put into pool. And that is the depreciation, the term in which it depreciates over time. Right now in Indiana, there's a 30% floor, meaning their assessed value cannot depreciate more than 30% of the cost. Well, now it will continue to go down below 30%. And they will still have assessed value, like pool two is the most common pool, like a five to seven year useful life, and it gets down to 15% depreciation. So there will be some assessment, but the personal property will decrease in, for new equipment coming in. So what I can envision, a lot of companies with, you know, personal property, if it's at a point in time where they can replace it, they're going to replace it faster, which will kick them into this new category of not having to hit the floor. So, again, that's a less assessed value because of depreciation, it will continue to depreciate over time. So again, less AV. So downward pressure on your AV, upward pressure on your tax rate. Slide six shows you the makeup of the city's assessed value. In all of these discussions, it's important to know, you know, where does your current net assessed value, where does it fall? And so you can see 30% of your AV is in the 1% categories. So those homestead properties, so just think about that and how it's going to decrease. 36% of your assessed value is in the 2% tax cap properties. Obviously, you're highly ag, which is probably why that number is so high. But you will see, I mean, you're going to see a significant decrease in that assessed value category. And yours, 36% is pretty high from what I've seen.
Now, we're not so much ag in the city, you know, so you've got some businesses in our ag area.
That's true. Yeah, so it'd be all your apartments.
Is this just city or is this the whole county?
This is the cities.
So I think that.
So it's ag and apartments?
And rentals.
Ag, apartments.
So that's mostly apartments.
And rentals.
Yeah.
So you will definitely see that decrease. The 3% category is 34% of your AV. So 3% really will not be touched besides those who have the personal property. So really, if you have commercial growth happening in the city, hopefully some of that growth will offset some of the decreases in these new deductions. But I would say because your 2% makeup of your assessed value is so high, I mean, you're going to see a pretty significant decrease in your assessed value. So, again, in Indiana, when AVs go down, tax rates come up to get you the levy.
So, and this was an inaction. How does that impact these deductions, the personal property deductions?
So those are all commercial property.
So, but that's what you were talking about, but this is personal property.
If, if that is a personal property abatement, it could, I guess, is that real or personal?
None is real, none is personal.
So personal property, yes. But it's for a new equipment that's in place as of January 1st of this year.
So anything from this point on, it does not.
So that would be existing equipment that you're giving a deduction on that stays at 30% floor. Yeah, okay. Yeah. One nuance with that 30% floor is if it is in an existing TIP area, then it can remain at the 30% floor. So administratively, we'll figure out how that's going to work. I think the division that puts out those forms has already revised it, but yeah, we'll see how that, if it's tracked correctly. So that, that are, those are the main things with assessed value. One nuancy thing that they put in, which is on slide seven, is because they knew AVs were going to go down and tax rates were going to go up, they put in to place for TIP areas, a TIP neutralization, which will be like a second neutralization that happens, that the DLGF basically has authority to adjust the tax rate down so that the TIP doesn't get more than it should because of legislative initiatives that they put into place. So, again, we will see what that looks like. Where I'm like working to try to get a part of a working group to see how they're going to actually try to calculate that, because there are so many different things that need to be considered when you're affecting TIP. So, but basically, they don't want the TIP to get way more because the tax rates are going to be skyrocketing. Slide eight talks about that maximum levy growth quotient. So in the very beginning, when SB 1 got rolled out, it was going to be 0% for next year, 2% growth of your levy. And then 1% and 2%, they changed that. So it, for next year, it's capped at 4% again, which is what it was for this year. Really, you should be about 5.1% maximum levy growth quotient, but because it's capped you're at the 4%. So you are technically losing out because of that, or actually 5.6%. And then in preceding years, they're going to basically change, look at the formula and change it again. So we'll see what they come out with next session. Slide nine shows you the, basically the loss of your levy, that LSA, the Legislative Service Agency, what they estimated your levy loss is due to them capping it at 4% when it should have been 5.6%. And that's on slide nine. And so you can see it's about 170,000, 171,000. Next year, 2027, it's about 195,000 of levy loss. 2028, it's 311,000 levy loss. But it really needs to go up to 2031 when a majority of those deductions are maxed out. Remember on slides prior, from the AV decreases, those AVs are going to continue to decrease like out to 2031. And LSA's analysis stopped at 2028 when it should have kept going. So that 311 will grow into, like up to, into 2031. So, those are all of the property tax related items. The next big item is on slide two, which is the local income tax. We will see if this gets changed or not, but essentially, they have revamped the local income tax, the lit, so that right now, you know, you guys have certified shares and your public safety lit and your economic development lit. All of those buckets are going away. And so the county will have now one big bucket of funds that they can spend their income tax on. You guys as a city, you guys are over 3,500 population, right? So you guys will have the opportunity to levy your own lit rate to cover your expenses, and that can be a max of 1.2%. And so in 2027, you will have to make the decision whether or not you implement the lit rate or you will not get your, the local income tax revenues that you are currently getting. So you will need to do that, and it is something that all cities, 3,500 population, more are going to have to do.
And we have to do that every year from now on?
And it is annual appropriation.
Which the argument with the mayor's group is how the hell are we going to do a bond?
Yes. But we've already met with the rating agencies because that could, essentially what's going to happen is the interest rates will be higher because the rating agencies don't like annual appropriation, because you get a whole, full new council in here. They decide, no, we're not, we're going to do away with the lit rate. That just is not going to be able to fly. I mean.
These are one of these things that's probably going to be tweaked a lot over the next session.
Yeah, especially for the small towns. I mean, the small town should be the, really the ones up in arms because if you're under 3,500 population, I mean, it's one of your main revenue sources, and it will be up to the counties to determine what, what rate you get put in place.
I have a question about that because that was one of the questions when we were sitting here, Beth, that we had related to, so the 2.9.
Is a total.
For the county.
That's county and like the city combined.
So everybody combined?
Yes.
So then if the county is that 2.88.
So the county is maxed, it will be 1.2 as well. So if you look on the box on slide 10, so the county goes to 1.2. Fire protection and EMS services is something the county votes on, but that can be an additional 0.4%. Schools, townships, libraries, they can, or request to county adopt it up to 0.2%. Municipalities under 3,500, they can go to the county and basically petition up to 1.2%. And then you guys have your own.
Each of the bodies has to actually petition the county.
Except you guys.
Except for us.
Yeah, so you guys will put it, you will vote it into place.
But we're already at, we're already at 2.88, so there's other.
But that, the equation has changed.
Changed, yeah.
So that resets it.
Yeah.
Okay, because that was the question that we had when we were sitting here with Kathy and Tramisier, and that is when we were watching this AIM presentation was at 2.88, there was no room for growth because of 2.9 was the cap. Well, I mean, a tad bit of.
Yeah, so it'll, it'll reset. The county will set theirs, you guys will set yours. If you live in the city, you will pay the county rate and the city rate as well, which is what you pay right now with the 2.88. So it's basically replacing the 2.88 now with like different, like the county is theirs, you guys will get yours, the townships could get theirs potentially.
So everything is like a clean slate at some point, and then you have to redo it, and that's 2027?
You have to vote it in in 2027, implementation in 2018.
Okay.
And that's where the mayors are up in arms because they're making us during election year.
But.
And if we have to up that, they're, they're making us the locals, the bad guys.
Well, yeah, and you know, the thing is, is like, they're the ones doing it, so you guys are simply what they're doing. You know, I mean, it's.
It makes, but the general public is going to see.
Yeah, right.
That's right. So these add up to 4.2 on here, but the county, when you live, the county you live in, the max you can do is 2.9.
Yeah.
So we, so basically, what's going to suffer are some of these extra, like, if you live in the city, if we did 1.2, the county does 1.2, we're up to 2.4, so we'd only be able to do 0.5 with the rest of the. Is that, am I saying that right?
Yes. So you, you all, you all will only have control over your 1.2%, right? So.
Which we don't have today.
Which you do not have today. And it is, those revenues come to you guys as a unit and not distributed to other units. So that is, it will be an opportunity for you guys to infill what you were losing from the property tax side of things and potentially gain revenue.
But if you're saying, because that's the thing, I think the 2.9 minus 1.2 formula we said, that's what's available for everybody else.
Which you cannot worry about.
Well, I'm just asking. I know that, I'm just trying to wrap my brain around. It's the whole thing. Does not add up.
So really, the people in the city is not going to pay any more than what we are already paying today.
Right.
As far as the income tax goes. Now, it's going to get.
You guys are one of the highest ones right now, so everybody choose to pay that. Right? So it's the county will max, you guys will max, you know.
Pick up.
How else do you work together with the townships and maybe some of the other units to make sure that they're taken care of?
But then would they have to, I mean, if they need to get something.
Well, the townships will be different because they'll be in the county.
We don't have.
They can do.
The schools and the libraries and the townships, they often go to the county and petition.
Okay. So we don't worry about our friends and family and the, all of the.
Yeah. So, so we can get, so we are waiting on the DOR to roll out, you mean adjusted gross income for us to do accurate estimates and what those revenues are. We have good census data that we are getting very, very close on calculating, so you guys have an idea of, you know, what you could potentially generate. But I think it's definitely something that I would suggest you start to think about. And the next slide, I did lay out what your current lit distributions are, again, so just the city.
I will find next question.
Good. I tried to make it very logical how I'd want to know it. So the pie chart on the right-hand side does show you kind of the makeup of all of the little slivers of different townships and the schools and libraries and that get the little different pieces. This is just for certified shares, so you guys have some perspective of the pie, but you can see on the left-hand side, your certified shares is 1.47 million. The public safety portion of that lit is 830,000. And then your economic development lit is about 382,000 for a total of 2.68 million called it. So you guys are a library heavily on the lit, and so you will have to activate and make that move forward if it does not change between now and 2027. I would not be surprised if they take step back and say, oh, we didn't analyze this enough because I think that there are quite a few units of government that will be affected more than they realize. more than they realize. I, I personally like that it's in your control, though, that you guys would be able to implement your own lit rate, but just kind of on the, on the technical side of things to see kind of how that's going to look as far as actual calculation is good. And then I put there to, like, for the county, this makeup of the 2.88%, each of the components of that 2.88%. So you guys don't get, you know, you don't get the county correctional facilities, the special purpose, you don't get EMS, you get probably a portion of that. And then the lit PTRC, the PTRC is actually going away. So I guess that's a property tax effect that I forgot to put in here. So PTRC is a credit to your guys' tax rate that you're paying right now to, to you all as taxpayers that is going away by 2028. So the tax rate on your tax bill will bump up just a little bit because of that lit PTRC of 0.4, that 8%. I should add the that to the numbers. So again, I just wanted you to have the basic knowledge for right now. I think that it would be, would be very wise of you to have us start running a little bit of numbers for you to see what kind of rate it would take to get you to this 2.68 at least, and then maybe even plus some if there are other things that you're going to need to finance, that you're going to potentially lose revenue from the property tax changes.
And so you were able to do, so looking at all of the changes year by year.
Just the city.
For the properties currently as they exist, you were able to show the impact each year of what that would be?
We can get you a revenue estimate, yeah.
So we've, probably using the wrong terminology, we've hit a circuit breaker, right? So we haven't been getting all the property tax we should have been getting because we hit this circuit breaker.
Yeah.
So I'm understanding what you're saying is the rates go up, then we're going to hit it faster.
So.
If it, if it, if your assessment goes down, the rate's going to go up, or that.
So you will have more, you will have, so your assessed values will go down, so some property owners will not be hitting the circuit breakers anymore.
Oh, okay.
But your tax rate's going up, so it's, there will be a small group of people that are paying more taxes than what they were before, because your circuit breakers will change.
So just random numbers, if we're capped at 6 million, but we could have gotten 6.5 million, except we hit the circuit breaker, and these AVs dropped down, now, you know, are, we, we've got a cushion built in there.
Is what?
It's like we have a cushion built in there, because we've been hitting the circuit breaker every year. Could have gotten this amount, but we're only allowed this amount, so if property tax went down, we still might hit close to what we've been hitting.
Yeah.
So it may not affect us as much because.
Because you're hitting circuit breakers so much. I don't know what percentage of your property owners are hitting that.
I mean, your kit was already $119,000 on a share, but I don't know.
Then the other thing, question is what, you know, I talked, mayors are going around the table talking about what are you going to do? Well, we're going to freeze wages, we're going to not replace people if we're losing, we're trying to do more with less. We'll stop, had several projects on hold, and I'm thinking, holy cow, we haven't had a project moving forward for 20, 30 years. I'm not going to stop projects moving forward, so we'll figure out some way to do it. So as we grow and as we hopefully get more business and hopefully get more housing.
Right.
That's going to help us too.
The more commercial growth you have is going to help the whole puzzle too, because they're not as affected by these changes.
All the numbers you're going to generate for us is as is kind of right now.
Yes.
Okay.
Understand.
I don't know, I mean, personally, I don't feel like anything we've got going, we should put on hold at all. We just need to keep moving forward, and you advise us the same way.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay.
Just I wouldn't say that with Michael. He can't hear right now.
Just a couple other things, there are more slides in here that I, that I'm going to go over, but the budget process, starting in 2029, there is an additional public hearing, so just something to keep in mind, so you can see that bottom row of process there. 2013, for fire territories, the tax rate that they're able to issue is limited to 40 cents. So that is a change, there used to not be a limitation. On slide 14, the first bullet point there is that for growing communities, they often want to go appeal their excess, for an excess levy appeal, and essentially it allows you to get more levy, and that is going away. So you can no longer get excess levy appeals, which for growing communities is detrimental, because then you're never able to grow your levy to the level that you need to grow, grow it. So your, your commercial growth will happen, but your, the city's budget will not be able to keep up with the need, is essentially what will happen. Hopefully that will change, and we'll make them realize the impact of that. And then the DLGF is developing a property tax transparency portal by January 1. We'll see. So the rest of the slides are really just things to start thinking about, kind of next steps in, you know, focusing on short-term and long-term, and, you know, where do you want to start quantifying your losses? And I think really step one, in my personal opinion, is taking a look at the, the local income tax and what that could potentially do for you guys as a city, to make sure that you are in, like lined up and ready to go if things don't change between now and 2027. On the property tax side of things, it, you could definitely do assessed value analyses, pretty easy to see how much assessed value could potentially change, and that is not so difficult. To do a tax rate impact calculation, it can definitely be done. I would say if it's something that the county and the schools and everybody wanted done, that's really the most economical view of it, if you wanted to get some idea of where your property tax rate was headed. But I think kind of first step would be to look at the local income tax, if that's something you guys want to do.
Their consensus around the table is that a year from now, I think, look differently than they do now.
Yeah.
Because like you said, they're, they passed something they don't understand and don't realize the implications it's going to have.
Yeah.
So they think there's going to be a lot of adjusting in the next session.
Yeah. And I think LSA does a really good job. I think it's just that to get a cumulative effect analysis, it's just not happening in, in going out far enough, it just, it's not there yet. I think they have the ability to get there, but. So.
You mentioned assessed valuation going down a couple of times in your comments, and that's because of the caps that are being put in place by the state, is that correct?
The new deduction, assessed value deductions being added for homesteads and for 2% properties, which are apartments, senior living, rental homes, those are the reasons. It's a new deduction, and think of a deduction kind of like a little abatement, for example, it's a reduction.
I'm just trying to match up with, we just got tax, we just got our assessed valuations, right, with everybody? And mine went way up, so is.
For 2026, did you get it already?
Yeah.
Are the new deductions on there? Yeah, I mean, you could look at, look at the slide number one, and you could double check that, I guess 48,000 is not changing, your supplemental homestead deduction is, is going up just a little bit. So it, you probably won't see a whole lot of change in 2026, because these change, this changes your memo, but by 2031 is where you'll see definitely more. But this, these deductions, yeah, do not affect the assessment of your property, and, you know, the state actually provides to each county the cost tables of, that they have to implement into assessed values. So that, that is not contemplated in these changes. So it could be that, yeah, your AVs are going up, but the percentage of your supplemental homestead deduction, if it's a larger number, and it's 40%, then it's going to be a larger
And I think that was what was in the center just recently, the assessments are going up because of the cost of building, the houses stuff, and I think that was the article just a few days ago. I think that's what we're seeing, and I think that's what we saw in our, what we got in the mail, I think.
But if our assessed valuation goes up considerably, it's going to offset some of these.
Right.
Yes.
Losses.
Yes.
Yes.
And that's, and that's what, I wonder if they won't, those assessed values won't get closer to market values, and that, I don't know if they can, and then that, if that's the case, then yeah, I, that's going to.
I mean, they've been pretty far off for a whole career.
But they're getting really close now, aren't they? They're getting really close.
Homes are really close, I would say commercials still pretty far off, apartments pretty far off still.
So sitting in a conversation today, this was an interesting, it was a legislative update, and one of the comments that was made, and I'm trying to wrap my brain around all this, they said, everybody is worried about losing revenue, but according to said individual, who remain nameless, this entity was going to grow by 1.8% in assessed value or whatever the tax. And so they would, they said that they would be cutting, they would have to look at projects and cut half of their projects out, because they would not, they would be growing, but it would be growing at a lesser rate. So it wasn't technically that they were losing, they're just not gaining as quickly. And so they basically said, stop saying you're losing money or not losing money, or just not gaining as fast. Would you find that to be something that makes logical sense as to that statement? It was a legislator who sent that to us. And so I went, I'm trying to pick one.
I just.
I, I think it was situational based, which I know is kind of a lame answer.
It's county by county, or situation by situation.
There are so many moving factors, like you just pointed out.
There's no way to rightly divide.
You know, and so, I mean, we have had developers even this past week saying, hey, the state just rolled out their cost tables, and like all of, all of the assessed values are going up. I'm like, okay, it's, they're trying to get closer to cost. So right now, say the, the cost is 5 million, well, the assessment's like 80, 80% of cost, or even something less than that for a commercial, for apartments. I mean, there is still a wide gap between market rate, basically the cost you're paying for a good, and what the assessment is in Indiana. And that, I mean, it's.
The gap.
There's, yeah. So, but depending upon what type of project, you have this apartment development, I'm like, well, we're going to get 33% deduction, so complain about it now, but you're going to get this wealthy deduction like really soon, so, yeah.
All right. I feel sorry for you guys.
Any other writing?
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you. I thank you.
We're not sorry, though. At least somebody's paying attention to me.
Morning, morning. Is there any other new business? Not, take the boys.
No, not a lot changed in April. Run numbers were fairly similar to March, we had three left runs, structure fires grew up slightly. Struck five, got a new pump installed, it was at the 10-year mark, and corrodes beyond use, leaking pretty bad, and then when we put it back together, it leaked worse, so we just replaced it. We've had Spencer up to work on the main pump on engine two, generator still 10 zero, waiting on Randy to get back with us on quotes for it. What they're telling us now on the generator is it's obsolete and they can't get parts for it. Last, he looked at it, it was $26,000 to replace it, but the generator's undersized for the building anyways, we took it from the old building, so we're trying to find one that will do the entire building. Training, we had CPR with the, on the 8th with the city employees, with the high school on the 13th, and the public on the 21st. The next public one will be June 18th at the fire station, 6 o'clock. We also looked at equipment, location uses for our monthly drill, and then we had representatives from Hen Nozzles come up with Dingus Fire to go over friction losses and hose pressures, trying to see what kind of hose is best placed, application for what. We finished the mock, mock prom scene, that went off okay, and ran a water supply line over to the Parkview crew so that they don't have to drag our hose 90 feet to their end of the bay, so they have their own bid over there now. Nice little dish for them, so that wraps up the month.
Anything, sir? Andy, two shots.
For the month of April, you've got my report, you see the numbers, 21 accidents, we issued 294 warnings, 69 of those were for city ordinance, so our code enforcement is doing a great job. Stay busy, stay inactive, 79 toll offenses, 26 lockouts, 273 traffic stops, 30 case reports, 830 calls for service for incidents, and 13 people incarcerated. And then you have the crimes that they're logged for. Other than that, we've got Apple contesting Saturday, so take another shot at it, see what we can get. If we can get one, we're still, if you remember, we're still trying to replace that hang to retired in this year. That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Have a question. Chief, are you comfortable in your seating position?
Absolutely not.
Pardon me?
No, but I appreciate you asking.
But is there something we could do to make it more comfortable?
Nope, I'm good.
You sure?
Yep.
What are you asking? If he's comfortable in his seating position, we had a discussion.
We had a long conversation before the meeting started.
He needs a mirror so he can see behind him.
I hate sitting with my back to the wall, but I'd not sit at the front of the room, sorry.
It's concerning, we know you've made a few enemies, but.
I know, I thought, made him mad too.
Do we need to lock the door after we get everybody?
We can yell at them.
Thanks, John.
Let's try it. Okay, no other department hits present, so it's purely with RDP.
Okay, I'll make it quick. June 9th will be the first lunch in Centennial Park, I talked to Dwayne today, the picnic tables are in. They, they got them today, they're putting them together. You can't come, you already looked, you already said you couldn't. You'll come to June 23rd.
I think I can be there for a little bit.
Okay.
Let me look at your.
So I'll meet with Dwayne later to find out, we want to keep the picnic tables on a hard surface, so we're not worried about the grass and all that. June 10th, I gave you an invitation to Main Street Matters, we look forward to everyone being there. June 13th, RDP is attending the Main Street Conference, which is the next level, like to shoot for, or if, it's called the IMES program, Aspiring IMES, we do that in August. A really fun thing, be on the lookout in downtown, we finalized the plan today, as long as Bryce doesn't kill us, we're doing large window decals on one of the abandoned or empty buildings downtown. That promotes downtown activity schedule and brightens a corner, a much needed one. And that should hopefully be in flame the next two weeks. Dora, we're this close on everything ordered, and then like the importance of that June 10th meeting, that's where we will present what it looks like, and as importantly, what it doesn't look like, you know, so, and show the stickers, the, the map, the parking signs and all that. Nickel Plate's doing awesome, the Tetcha Truck Program, we talked, did I, I told you guys about that last month? And we've got a lot of collaborations going there too, so.
The next day, I'm not going to be, I'll be on the next day, June 10th, everything.
Okay.
But I'll be there for a while on the 9th, it starts 11.
11. And then we have June 23rd, Border Works approved that, and then you need to do July 7th, we have that booked as well. There's a lot of people really looking forward to this, so I think it's going to be fun. And it's fun, a good way to get together, and the community foundation is willing to throw in money to help promote it. After the meeting, I'll ask about some van replacement, but there's a lot coming. It's going to be fun. Any questions?
So it's just lunch?
Just lunch.
Just hanging out?
You can bring your own, you can, the first host will be Joe's Hope, where we've worked with Don, nonprofits can do that. He's going to do hot dogs, brats, he's already got the buns, Mike Anderson donated a grill. RDP is hosting the one after that, and then Porkin Out, the tenderloin people that were at Nickel Plate, they're coming, Pat's working on a team. So it'll be fun, and we're going to shoot for twice a month, and if it takes off, we'll Good?
You're going to have a dunk tank for the mayor over. You're going to have a dunk tank for the mayor over acid, right?
Sure.
I'm trying to disappear.
No.
I just figured if I've been suggested already.
It hasn't, but I would let you know. It's a good idea. Anyone that, any department heads that are doing Touch a Truck, I threw this out last week at county. If you want to raise money for, like, we're going to have a table for hero banners. I told Fishburne that he could have a table to collect money for the flags for the veterans that shop with the cop. Like any, if you have a truck there and you have a community organization, we want you talking about your mission and raising some money.
Amy, Harry Plan?
Harry Plan was canceled for lack of business. Animal Adoption Center, there was a, an event hosted at the museum and they had multiple vendors and raised $1,077 and collected 486 pounds of pet food, 486.5 pounds of pet food, litter and cleaning supplies. So they are working very hard and Jana is in charge of those fundraisers now and she's working very hard.
Things are just moving along on a regular basis, pretty much slows and lasses right now with the ready funds basically still frozen, except for projects that have already received confirmation, which the Little Zebby's program has. We're expecting hopefully by the end of the week for them to get a confirmation letter saying projects as a go, which means that we still have to do a visual inspection for the state, but that is a total of $5 million project, two and a half of it coming from the rate project. Then the other things that we're doing, the housing projects are still, are moving along, of course. The industrial park has been submitted finally. We're hoping to get some good news, hopefully by the end of the week, that that'll be considered at this point in time. Last, I'm working with the regional group on transportation, agriculture, childcare studies, regional studies, also involved with both school systems locally, the Chamber of Commerce and the Community Foundation on doing our own childcare study. They recently received a $40,000 grant from Duke to study childcare issues here in the county. And the last thing would be, I'm working with, I've been asked to work with County Museum to find grants for them for, to increase their, or create new projects and displays and things like that. So I'm working with that too.
You going to come tomorrow? Okay, I'll talk to you afterwards. I'm planning on it too.
Okay.
Park Board, Bob?
I met back on May 12th. What's going on? Pools, I think, been seeing some cement poured in and paper. And I think they were hoping to be open possibly sometime this week, but I know the temperature's been pretty cool, but Kim, did they got a new bake?
Bake started putting liner in. It takes a week and a half to two weeks. But I talked to the guy yesterday and I said, if we had no rain, how soon can we have it opening? He said in a week and a half.
So maybe it'll be warm enough by the.
So there, yeah, we wouldn't have a pool open now anyway. If it's not 70 degrees, we don't have it, we don't have it open. So this is the final stage. They had to do a pressure strip around the hole inside the pool, like a screw every inch and that took like four days. And now they've got that done. They completed that today and they said we should be going really fast on that. So it's going to be pretty.
Good. So a couple more weeks on, on that, but a lot of work being done there. We met, or Landon Knotts was at the meeting and he's the designated or supervisor for the parks, am I using that term correctly, I think? So they have a full-time person looking after the parks at this time. The golf carts, our golf courses going full steam. They've done a lot of bunker repairs, spraying, aerating. They had a new mower arrive. Still working on their payment system, I think some. They still are using T-Stamp, but still looking around a little bit on that, if I understood correctly. Lindsay Bartsch has got the summer program really rolling. I think there's over 100 kids enrolled and they're doing some fundraisers there. They got a chicken in a car wash coming up at some point. They got a grant from Good Oil. And that's, I think it's about a six-week program, right? Is that what it's? And they've got a lot of things planned for those kids. Should be very active. Jessica Shaper is doing all their marketing. She was there. She's doing a lot of things on the website, doing a lot of promotions in the park. I think she may be promoting some of the things that Julie talked about too on that site, maybe, maybe not. But a lot of things going on in the parks that she's promoting and trying to get going. Pickleball is going. Scott Kilsner's got the nets. They were set up, looking for some grants, possibly on some equipment as time goes along. I guess BNR supposedly has some of the best grants, 50/50. And that's some of what they did, but they did a lot more than that in that meeting.
Do you have a dollar amount you raised on a beautiful golf day you had?
Not exactly, but it should be between $10,000 and $11,000. That's what we cleared.
We still had 14 teams come out that day, right? Something like that?
We did. We had, out of 17, we only had.
Says a lot about the mental state of our community when it comes to playing golf.
There wasn't a summer.
I couldn't believe, I was out there for a little bit and it was like hell, man.
They were truthful, I wouldn't have done it. I stayed inside. But yeah, it, it was a lot of fun. We can't wait till next year and we're trying to think of other fundraisers to do too. So we're halfway there for the debate and so we're excited about that.
Good deal.
Good job.
Thank you.
All right. BZA and Council on Aging?
Yeah. Council on Aging met last week. It was a pretty short meeting because Transpo was out of town, as was RSPB. So we spent time kind of talking about the usage of our facility and all the groups that are in there. It was a good meeting, but Transpo still did over 2,000 trips last month. So a little under what total from last year, but it's creeping back up there. BZA meets tomorrow night and thanks to the City of Rochester, we're actually having a meeting because there's two new items of business on the agenda and it's both City of Rochester asking for variances. One is side, side setback at 520 and 524 East 8th Street for construction of a new storage building.
I know nothing about it.
And the other variance is a fence variance for an eight-foot chain link fence around 14, 15 Pontiac Street.
Open to the community.
Right for the community garden?
Proposed community garden location. So asking for a variance on that because the height of a fence is four feet on the sides and three feet in the front and we want to do it eight foot all the way around. So.
Keep deer out. I just want to say.
Do you have anything on solid waste or redevelopment? I can talk about redevelopment.
I didn't go solid waste, sorry, I had to cook.
I didn't either.
Yeah.
Okay. Rick, do you have anything interesting about solid waste, meaning?
No, not really.
Okay.
Not that happens.
Same old, same old. She got a new bailer. Yes.
She got what, a new bailer?
Got the new bailer. We give her okay by the end of the day.
Redevelopment Commission, I'll speak to that. We did close last week on purchase of the part of the Cronberg property, which is around the truck stop, but we also split some of that off, I think 12.83, if I remember the number correctly, of the 41 roughly acres was purchased by Neil Shepherd for a dealership to move in there. And eventually it's manufacturing. So we bought the remaining amount partly for the water tower. There's going to be about 12 acres to the south that we're working with Club 720 out of Fort Wayne to put a housing project in. That will hopefully return us back a lot of our investment. So, but we did close on that after about a year and a half worth of work. Let's see, what else? We, we're working with Monica at PUDS on working out some, finalizing some, hopefully some answers there. We'll know more after tomorrow's meeting. I'm thinking of something else. Nothing I can think of at the moment. So anyway, staying pretty busy with the RDC. Met with, oh, Apache Drive. Met with Heidi for about an hour before this meeting on working, trying to come to an agreement with the developer for the housing project around Apache Drive. So that will be coming across, I hope, this council soon, maybe this early, this next month, maybe, but we'll see. Okay. Sidewalk Tree Board, Brian?
I was not able to attend.
Water Board, John? Do you want me to give all the figures?
We had a special meeting, the first meeting of the month, of course, we had a meeting where we were getting bids on some projects. And so we had a meeting just last week as to the acceptance of the bids after Commonwealth. And of course, the Water Board had a chance to look them over. And recommended a bid for a water distribution system improvements. Commonwealth Engineering recommended Willpower Executing and Bulldozing at a base bid of $4,773,75 and 21 cents. Beth and I heard that 21 cents is like, really? And then the other bid was on the new elevated storage tank. We're going to have a 750,000 gallon, gallon storage tank come up. And Commonwealth again recommended Codwell Construction at a base bid of $4,82,300. And that's for the new water tank that we're going to have. The line replacement project, Commonwealth again, was five-star engineers, had a bid And I think we had one more on the building here.
That was a lead pipe replacement line.
I get lead pipe. What did I say?
You said line replacement, there's lead pipe.
Sorry about that. New buildings at the water plant, they made a motion to approve O and R buildings at And those are the four projects that are going to be going on that we're going to be repairing and fixing what we need to be done that has not been done for a while.
Make sure we're in it that way.
It's a flat fact.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay.
Any other questions, Brad? That's all it is.
Rick, do you have anything for the county?
Not really. I just want to emphasize, we do got Jason from Baker Telly working on our side. He's supposed to have some modeling done for us for all the counties by the end, middle of June. We'll know pretty much where we stand, but we all need to work together because they're trying to take all of us to.
When I mentioned that to Matt Greller about bringing the commissioners and the, and the superintendents into the meeting with Governor Braun, if we have the opportunity, he said, well, if you guys can get along, okay. Most, most people can't. I said, well, we can.
We'll get along. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, that's all I got.
All right. Thanks for being here, Rick. Appreciate it. Got anything legal?
No.
ADA concern with us? Any public comments? Do you have anything, sir, you want to share? No, I'll wait until you adjourn, that'd be good. Okay. All right. Anything else that we need to cover tonight? All right. Need a motion to adjourn, you two adjourn? All favor say.
Yes, this, everything else, that was.
Yeah, we can hear you, we can hear everything.